Law enforcement do not. So, in your opinion, the director's author has to seek a warrant for so to Article eighteen oh five. Okay. Counsel, anything else on that section? I'm ready to go to regulations if you are.
On five, public information, do we need to specify that this, it says all permits issued under this article constitute public information, subject to the terms of the Public Information Act? Do we need to say something about like an online map or database that it will be readily available for the public online or on the website? Because I, the way it reads now, it looks like I have to submit a PIA request in order to get the information. That they do now, but you could also look on the database that's online that is awesome, the, a map you have.
Right, but, and that's, that's policy. I mean, I think this is, this is the formal, so if they were looking for something very specific in the permit that wasn't part of that database, and the database in the map we're, we're using and we want to continue to use, but I don't know that we want to codify it.
Let me add something on that. There are some things we can't release about particular individuals, and that's why it's important to reference the Public Information Act.
Anything else on that section? Regulations, duration of rental period, the P N Z recommended adding the word consecutive in the middle of that paragraph, term of thirty or more consecutive days, the owner and our operators and other staff in accordance with Section twenty two twenty sixteen, in order to preserve the property's short-term rental earning. The next paragraph, occupancy, a number of occupants to, um, let's see, no short-term rental shall permit the cumulative, cumulative total number of occupants to exceed twelve.
Currently, it's called adults, correct? This is called people.
Twelve persons. Okay, alright. See, parking restrictions, a short-term rental owner and operator must provide an onsite parking spot per bedroom. Later in that paragraph, tandem parking is permitted for multiple vehicles, so long as no part of the parked vehicle obstacle, pedestrians, a public right-of-way. My opinion on the parking folks, and the parking issue and the, um, occupancy is that none of that be retroactive. That we, we not consider retroactivity on that, because we've got a lot that are operating well and they can't, because we built a lot of the town on this business, especially those are small ones too, every houses and such. And parking was not as big an issue in nineteen seventy as it is in twenty twenty-three, because there aren't as many cars and as big a car. So, um, my opinion is that whatever we do here with parking and, and occupancy, it looks like we're going to keep, but we're going to keep it at twelve persons. Um, am, am I right? That's not a change, twelve, correct? But, uh, that, that we not require existing permits to comply in, in the parking restrictions with the, the, I'm going to go one per bedroom, no new ones, new ones. Okay, everybody?
Absolutely. Was the, was the twenty eighteen ordinance, like was that not working well? When it was, what was it, one space per unit? Yes, that was problematic, when it was one per unit, and a unit could be multiple bedrooms.
And that's not to say that parking is not an issue with several S T Rs in neighborhoods. We hear about that a lot. When you have a four-bedroom or something and, and you have people from various parts of the state, birds and all bring a car. I'm not diminishing the problem that that increase that I causes. I'm responding pragmatically to the workload and the ability to effectively enforce. And if we can convince our operators to say, look, you, this is a neighborhood and there are people who live next door, et cetera, et cetera, would you please be aware that people have to get in and out and they walk and their children play, et cetera, of putting the burden on the operators to mitigate some of that.
What is the fine for parking, when people park in the right-of-way? Because I'll get pictures sometimes where people park a car in front of someone's driveway.
Fines are set by the municipal court, so that's, that's not something that we have any involvement in.
Do we have the authority to tow that vehicle? If it's blocking somebody else's driveway?
Yes, if we're blocking access to even a residential property, we do have the authority to tow. That rarely occurs, of course, but we do under the Motor Vehicle Code have that authority, the police department. And that would be a non-consent tow and there would be charges.
On this parking restrictions, do they get two, the credit for two on-street parking?
Not as proposed, no, that would go away, giving credit would go away. Now, anybody can park on the street legally.
Right.
Right, but you wouldn't get credit towards your permit.
Okay, so if your permit, so if you have a three-bedroom S T R.
Yeah.
You have to park three on the, on the property.
Yes.
If the property, as it stands now, only supports one parking, because you have two on the street, on the, in the old ordinance, then they would have to make it modify the current site to accept three cars.
For a new permit.
For a new permit.
Is this our way of zero-skipping? We just pave all the front yards and park there?
That, that will have, if we do that, we'll have parking lots in neighborhoods.
So we have restrictions on front yards and how much impervious cover you can have, um, and where you can park, and the width of driveways. But yeah, that's not the intent, intent is not to turn front yards into, into parking lots.
So if there's no way, say, three-bedroom, if there's no way they can support three cars on property, then they would have to reduce occupancy, pay a new permit.
A new permit, right, we'd only be able to.
Not retroactive.
Correct. If they could park two, they could use two bedrooms.
So we're not really addressing current problems.
Correct.
Parking. And we just have to cry uncle or figure out a way to make it more effective through enforcement.
I would love to see a courtesy parking lot or paid parking lot somewhere that, you know, if your, if your property only makes sense with two spots, but you've got four bedrooms, say you only have two spots and then people can park somewhere else. That would be ideal, I think, but.
Are you talking about existing permits or new?
New.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very much in favor of keeping existing.
I wish we could take care of more parking issues through ordinance. The current issues that are going on, I wish we could. I'm, I'm open to going out, but, but, um, ability to enforce is a prize, a challenge.
Are we going to have a designation on the permit so that P D can tell if it's prior to this or, or this, after this?
No, again, it's not because you can park on the street. It's not that we're restricting parking on the street, but it would be once they come in for a permit, right? So if you come into January second for a permit, then we're going to review that. And if you don't have the parking, you're not going to get a permit for all of the bedrooms. Not that you can't park on the street, once you get the permit, you know, so if you get the permit for, for two bedrooms instead of three, then we'll monitor your, your listing to see what you're making available for rent. So then if you were, and you can, you could park it on the street, but you wouldn't get credit. So then it would be watching the occupancy, I guess, on the listing. That would be a violation, and if you were sleeping that extra bedroom and doing above occupancy as permitted, that would be the violation, not really that you were parking on the street. Does that make sense?
It does, but it also sounds like a major pain to try to monitor people's parking. I mean, we don't do a good job with it now. How, how can we en- ensure that we're going to do a better job?
Again, council member, we're talking about permitting, not how, how many cars are on the street. And we can monitor and do monitor listings of S T Rs, and we'll continue to do that. So if it's an illegal listing, it will be a violation.
But how will you know?
Well, we know because they're advertising too many bedrooms, the amount of parking they have onsite.
So if we could look at the next section. We'll come back, but if we skip ahead to advertising on page ten, and we could probably tie this to the parking section itself, so it says, the owner operator shall not advertise or promote or allow another advertiser to promote S T R without including the following information, permit number, maximum occupancy, parking plan, we could work on this in house rules. So parking plan, we could require that you have to list parking spots. So, okay, you've only got parking spots available, don't bring more than two, or at least make them aware there are two parking spots available onsite.
Right.
That are dedicated to this. I just stayed at an S T R in another town, and that was part of it. Like, it was very clear, you have this many spots, don't bring more than this many cars. So you can put it in the advertising requirement and in the parking requirement. But again, the enforcement's a different thing. Permit and the listing are what we can control, where you actually park the night of your stay.
And I know you said this, just to be clear, this does not affect current S T Rs. Anything in this ordinance, in this draft, is my recommendation.
Right, that's, that's mayor's recommendation for the final draft.
It does not affect current S T Rs. Just new.
Exactly.
As updated this.
That's, that's an uncle for me, because, um, we don't have the staff, the, the enforcement capability to deal with this issue in real time. So we need to have help from our operators, reduce the ranker and work together, and to inform your guests that this is an issue in town, we hope you'll be respectful of your neighbors here, use these parking spots as much as possible, um, or period. Am I missing something big about?
Reminder to be a good neighbor. You know, there's people that are here full-time, all the time, and don't like cars being parked in front of their home.
Every weekend.
Yes, but then, I mean, they also don't own the street in front of their home, so.
And I understand that it's a public street, people can park there and so forth. It's just if continuing to be informative of your occup, your guests, that this is something that would be helpful to us if you would have applied. That's, I think that's where we are. But any new permits come with this restriction? Okay. All right, D, life safety, one, the short-term rule must be equal to life safety measures, getting the standards of international authority, building code, et cetera. R three occupancies, is that to be a big size, right?
We did speak with P D and fire and code, and they had some specific recommendations for what to include specifically drawn from the I R C and the I B C, and was that given?
Well, I know, I'm asking specifically about the, I have in my document, R three occup, regulations for R three occupancies.
So that's an international building code designation, that's, it's not referring to the R three zone. No, no, it's not referring to the R three zone.
Thank you for my education.
It's a completely separate provision contained in the international building code.
Okay, got it. Food service, I was here for the long P N Z meeting, and one of the, uh, two words that they wanted to include was such meals, I meant for food service, such meals should be limited to a continental-type breakfast consisting of, for example, Mr. Dooley didn't want to specify that they have to serve pastries and milk and cereal. So that's why that appeared, just making notes. G, twenty-four-hour contact, we are again within the thirty minutes, um, and one hour. I just wanted to note that that appears twice, and it's consistent with what we talked about a while ago. And I wondered if Rachel and others, if in that paragraph, the, the phrase, within one hour of receiving a call from the director requesting the twenty-four-hour contact's presence, shouldn't be, not the director, because it should be whatever the other, the P D or, or whoever's going to be monitoring the night time, right?
So technically, the ordinance defines director as the director or designee, so.
P D fits.
Yes, but if you would like it to be more clear, we can, uh, add some phrasing there.
You want to be more specific on the definitions I covered? We're good, yeah. Advertising?
This might need some work. Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm jumping, jump in anytime.
I just think, there's a couple of things here, do we need to define what a listing is? What I've heard is concern that a business card counts as advertising. How are people going to fit a parking plan on a business card? And then, house rules is referenced in advertising, but then later we're talking about host rules on I, or J. I'm, I'm told that host rules are what is on the premises, but house rules is what is listed on the listing. Is that correct? Or maybe it's, we just need to use house or host? Just pick one, okay? And then, um, yeah.
I'll make sure I'm hearing you right, are you on advertising?
Yes.
Okay, are you suggesting that we ex, that we exclude business cards, or is that understood?
To define what an advertisement is, or define what a listing is, because there's concern that that's going to be a gotcha. People are going to say, you didn't put your parking plan on your business card, it's advertising, so.
The intent is for it to be out there to the person fishing for the service.
Right, because this looks like a rat card, which doesn't count.
So what do you recommend to tighten that up?
We can add a definition of listing.
And then parking plan, does that necessarily need to be on there, or can it just be parking maximum? Because I don't care what, you know, it doesn't matter when I'm booking in a B and B, but I want to know how.
Parking map? Max, max, okay. Rachel, what was your comment about listing, defining it?
We can just add a definition in the definition section for listing to clarify that it would be like whatever shows up on Airbnb or what have you.
So, doesn't mean business cards?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else on that section?
Yes, on conduct on premises, I think.
Let's go back, um, can we just go ahead and pick whether it's house rules or host rules? You said pick one, but nobody picked one, so.
Because I think on some of the listing sites, I'm sorry, I'm looking at cards that was written last night, there's certain listing sites where you can only have like three host rules online. And so if we're requiring seven things listed, that that's going to be a problem for people, so.
Is there a difference between, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there a difference between house rules and host rules?
Somebody, somebody in the business, April Linda, is there a difference?
Okay, so we just need to pick one, okay?
How about host, because it might not always be, it could be a B and B.
Like host rules?
Yeah.
Okay, that.
Don't care.
I thought it would, yeah.
All right, alter that word to host rules. Anything else?
Sorry, I, conduct on premises. I've been told that the city needs to give exact wording that would be required for the hosts to list, and also it's pretty vague, all relevant city codes, I mean, should we add in there, thou shall not commit, kill three, thou shall not murder? I'm serious, what, like, it just, this is like a catch-all, like, oh, by the way, you know, abide by all our rules. Do we need to have a link to the rest of our city code? Do we need to have a reminder not to be killing people?
You're in the very first sentence of conduct on premises.
Um, second.
And specifying requirements of the city code.
Yeah, it just, it, to me, that seems very vague.
I think that staff could approach this from kind of the administrative end, when a permit is issued, they can provide, along with the permit, kind of just a blanket statement that operators and owners can share with occupants.
Great.
So, um, to be clear, would you prefer more specificity in that?
Well, if it's, if it's administratively handled in whatever packet people receive for a permit, then that's fine. They don't need more.
Linda, I'm using you as my, as my go-to person here, because I know you've done it for a while. Would it help operators to have that specified?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I, I understand a lot of the questions, but it's really helpful to know what requirement should be.
Okay.
I think, I suppose, one offering gets the right.
I believe that, and that's why I want to give specificity to help, so that you know exactly, I mean, I like that in my law, just here, what you guys do and don't do. So, do we need some time to develop those specificities? Because obviously, if we just pick the five or six that are most important, that's good, or the three, four, whatever, not a long list. Yeah, Rachel?
I think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think we can find examples.
And so when we're talking about providing greater specificity, do you mean in this particular section of the ordinance saying, owners or operators shall provide a statement stating this is what ordinances must be complied with? Is that what you envision?
Oh, I see, all relevant city codes and I can, well, I can see that, that would be difficult at times, and that's a lot of relevant city codes and occupants liability for violations. I'm going to want to know, what are you talking about? Adding some language that just specifies what those relevant codes deal with? I don't know if that's just a whole paragraph or thirty words or whatever, but I agree with Emily, specificity. Did you say we were reinventing the oil?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm looking now at, um, paragraph I three, which is about outdoor lighting, and there's just a specificity entered there, operating exterior string and floodlights in violation of Chapter five article. And then there's a, a specificity of outdoor lighting or the city's dark sky regulations of the code. Um, I believe that was probably a P N Z recommendation.
Yeah, the whole thing is, this, this ordinance applies to everybody. I mean, I've got them in my backyard, I realize I have to turn off at certain times.
Yeah, well, by the way, one of the primary discussions has been about S T Rs being, certainly trash water lights and noise, must be treated like everybody else in the neighborhood. It cannot be singled out to have a special restriction or requirement. And, um, okay, just making that, you're right. Using a permit of, 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 okay, K, host rules, um, do we need to list H O A rules? Is that our business?
It's been floated every now and then, but typically Mick and I recommend that we, that the city not get involved in that contractual relationship.
We're prohibited by state law from enforcing H O A covenants or other rules, so I like to stay away from any records.
I would just like to exercise that, because we, we can't enforce any H O A rules now.
It might implicate, we could impose.
Yeah.
I mean, we can ask for information to make sure the H O As know a new permit is being applied for, but as far as the city getting involved in.
So, I recommend that that be crossed out.
Number six, right?
Number six. The, um, item nine, property cleanliness requirements, again, is that our job? It should be the owner's job, right? The owner tell the people how they want them to clean up, what, what's our play in that? Am I missing?
So, so we're just recommending that that be included in the host rules, since that's something, cleanliness can affect the exterior of the property, trash, weeds, things like that, I guess not so much weeds, but trash.
But those are other ordinances, right?
Yes, so this particular provision is stating that this information should be provided in the host rules, so that occupants are aware of any applicable trash requirements, et cetera.
But if I'm an occupant, I'm not that concerned about the weeds and mowing and all that, am I?
Right.
Okay, so either we specify what that is, or we.
I recommend cutting nine, I mean, it's their business.
Yeah, I'm, we're cutting that too. Number ten, flooding hazards and evacuation routes, as well as information on the emergency sirens system and other safety measures, we need to get people on that, where, where do we find this out? Where do they find this out? Is this on, in the fire code? I mean, if I'm going to abide by this, I need to know where I look for it. Where do I look for it? I know? The door? Well, but I'm talking about information on the emergency siren system and other safety features. I'm assuming Chief, uh, Lynn, Fizzle, are you here? Are, are we talking about emergency siren system for the city? Yeah, that's what I thought. We don't have that anymore. Okay, so is there an application to an emergency siren system that impacts the city that would then impact occupants in an S T R? Okay. So, yeah, nine-one-one. So, yeah, I, maybe that should be altered, flooding hazards and evacuation routes, that can be in, in-house stop. But, um, and maybe other safety features, I don't know, I know we're trying to help people be safe, but let's give them some credit. There is no emergency siren system, right? Okay, so that goes. What do y'all think about number ten? Should, they should have some information about an emergency exit kind of stuff, right? I mean, flooding's not likely, but.
Well, if you go to motel or hotel, they'll have it on, on the chart.
Can we leave that up to the operators? And, and does that, does that, um, create a neglect in our mind, in, in our, um, action, Nick? Do we need to specify they need to tell?
Well, you just said that we didn't, we're responsible for the safety, right?
I just want to make it practical.
Well, I think that's really a policy decision. It is true, we not liable for not telling them to do something that we should tell them, or somebody thinks we should tell them, but this whole process is about life safety for temporary occupants of residence, as opposed to long-term. So it's up to you.
Okay.
Could we make it more permit-specific and just say, if relevant, I mean, if there's a bungalow down in a creek bed, they need an evacuation route that the city could provide them?
Well, this is a catch-all statement for evacuation routes as well, I mean, is this supposed to be just about flooding?
No.
No, just relevant, you know, if, if relevant, if applicable to the site. It'd be helpful to them.
So, emergency procedures, emergency evacuation procedures or something? I don't want to strain it on that, but I, I don't like the things to not have specific meaning.
I don't want to delete it, but.
Alter it?
Alter it, do away with the emergency siren system, but I think evacuation route, I mean, that's in every hotel room.
So let's look at that.
If it's hosted, or if it's in the host rules, something.
Rachel, just put a note, we need to alter that language as well.
Sure.
We have to remove the emergency siren system, does that suggest we have one?
We do.
It's evacuation of the, the house or evacuation of the town? I mean, because I read it in the papers, like, are you talking about?
I think we'll be doing good if we just get them out of the house, and then we rely on P D and E S.
We may have something already on boarding houses, we can modify.
Say that again?
We may already have something on our boarding house regulations that we're trying to modify.
So we're asking Rachel to look at different language in the number ten. Number eleven, what's a non-emergency number, that, that, are we going to require that? What, what, emergency numbers would be if you, if fire goes off or, um, somebody gets hurt, I mean, obviously, nine-one-one. But a non-emergency number, does that have meaning?
I think that envisions the non-emergency dispatch line for non-emergent complaints. So maybe something after hours where code enforcement isn't going to respond, but.
Oh, I see, okay.
Can it be specified, that's not clear in that? Can it be specified that that's what we're shooting for and not just?
Let's put something specific. All right, I'm rushing through, um, you stop me if you want. L is hotel occupancy tax, in accordance with Chapter forty-one, Article four of one. What is that, is that?
That's just of the city code, we can specify.
Okay, specify. Okay, specify. The owner operates short-term rentals shall contact the city finance department prior to the date, et cetera. That's, contact the city finance department is a P and Z. Does that clarify for you? Anything else on that section? I'm ready to go to special exceptions. All right, section twenty-two, twenty-three.
Actually, could we, could we return to life safety specifically? We've had some conversations with PD and fire, so we'd like some, some guidance from council on those recommendations from staff.
So this is in response to our emergency services people?
Correct.
So does this need to be entered or considered for entering in the draft?
Yes. So if you look at the life safety section that begins on the bottom of page nine, this would, it would go in where there's been language stricken out. So contents of that document.
Okay, and these are?
Yeah.
Texas property code. Okay. So for the audience's benefit, the short-term rental must be equipped with the following life safety measures. One, working smoke alarms meeting requirements of section ninety-two, two fifty-four of the Texas property code with a minimum of one on each floor or level and one in each bedroom. Two, a minimum of one working carbon monoxide detector on each floor or level. Three, a minimum of one to a ten B C top fire extinguisher, a standard five-pound fire extinguisher available on each floor. Four, all gas appliances shall be properly ventilated outside the structure. Five, for all structures built after date of building code address required, at least one means of egress, at least five square feet in size, providing access to the outside. These specific to STRs versus what goes on with my house?
These are basically pulled from the building code and residential code, and they're the provisions that PD, fire and code were most concerned about for STRs. So it's instead of applying the international codes uniformly, which it's, it's difficult because STRs don't fit perfectly into any category covered by either the IRC or the IBC. This way, we've pulled specific provisions that address specific concerns mainly with fire, means of egress and carbon monoxide. Just to kind of not apply too many regulations, but to kind of hit the, hit the high points. And that, that language will get some tweaking kind of as we finalize the last draft. So we'll be in touch with PD, fire and code as part of that.
And I'll just say on that, obviously, you know, code's written for a new contractor, the building inspector's inspecting a new building that meets the current building code. Of course, with STRs, the vast majority are not new structures, they're existing structures. So imposing current standards on existing structures is incredibly difficult, and we don't do that on your residence, right? So one of the hardest things to, to get is the egress, especially these historic houses. So we will continue to work on that's number five. Just keep that in mind about current codes and existing buildings.
So if this can win in the draft, I think I know the answer, but this would apply to all new permits? Or if this, or you want this to be a right?
This would apply retroactively to the extent that a building would be required to comply with a certain building code.
So if I'm existing now, I'm operating, and I pursue a renewal.
Right.
Then I must follow these regs.
Right, unless your home was constructed prior to the applicability of kind of those egress requirements that Anna was just mentioning. So if a structure wouldn't be required to comply with it ordinarily, we're not going to require compliance under the short-term rental ordinance. But for things like smoke alarms that can be, you know, bought at Home Depot and added to the ceiling, we would require them to provide smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, ventilate gas appliances, things that wouldn't require structural changes.
Okay. That's going to require some more law, right? Tell me how this does not separate STRs from regular residences.
Well, it doesn't sep, it does separate STRs from a residence that's occupied by a long-term renter or an owner or a relative. It does not separate STRs from other uses in town that are occupied by temporary transient occupants.
So we're on firm ground.
And part of the concern here is that, you know, the fire department is going to be responding in the event of something like a fire happening at a short-term rental, and so the fire department is concerned, since these are transient uses, the occupants wouldn't always, you know, know the correct means of egress, or they're concerned that they wouldn't be able to hear a smoke alarm if that was not in the bedroom. So that's the goal with including these particular requirements.
So the recommendation from Fire Marshal and U.S. is include these five provisions at D life safety. Counsel, okay with that?
Absolutely. I would hope that most of the STRs already have this in place.
Probably. Okay, please, please insert. We're ready to move on to twenty twenty-three special exceptions. All right. We have the specifics about permitting new ones in R two. One of the issues that I hear about a lot is, Mick, this is a question for you. Can we halt new STRs in R two? In other words, with this provision to say, we have enough. We've got housing stock issue, we have affordability issue, we have a segment of visitor population that's a challenge to manage. It shows up on every community survey that we've had in the last year or two. Don't give me a sense of, of whether and what to expect. Under current Texas law, you can't.
Can or can't?
You can.
C A N.
Do that, okay? And you, there is no real reason to treat STRs in R two differently from R one. It's just a policy decision. As far as legal status, they're, they're not that strict. As things stand today. That is one thing that the Texas legislature has looked at the last three sessions and has changed to its word, statute where it changes. And we'll be happy to give you some more legal advice, you know, on details, as we need to related to existence. Counsel, I'd like to know what you think about that. Because the language here tells how to do an R two, new R two. I'm wondering if in our, in our decision, can we just close the door on further R two properties? If you have a time limit. Beginning with the passage of this ordinance. So we're not taking from anybody, anybody that wants to apply. I mean, anybody who's operating can continue.
I'll jump out. If you look at our, our two neighborhoods, majority of the people in this town can't tell the difference between R one and R two. And I view this as no different than R one, other than zone differently. R two was originally so that you can have denser housing, but that's not how this town is built. So I personally believe that we should restrict R two going forward, just like we did with R one and that's my opinion.
I still have issues where there's zoning ordinance needs to be upgraded. You know, part of the deal, if you live on Main Street, you can take advantage of the traffic, the tourism. My deal on that is, is the, and I assume there's exception, I'm sure there's some being built right now. And that you don't want to shut the door on somebody that's building one, and I don't know, but I suspect. But there's no doubt the, the majority of the people in this community probably would like to see a stop to it. I'm kind of mixed about that.
You might support a, a new prohibition in R two?
I might. I have to look at it.
Okay.
Just thinking, are we going to repeat what happened in twenty twenty-two, where we have permit panic? We already have thirty percent of R two is STRs. What are we going to do in the next couple of months when that increases big time? But, I mean, that is a thing, but I've also realized, I agree with Bobby, that where we are in terms of availability of single-family homes, R two is very similar to R one. And I do not like the past R one weirdness of a block in the seventy-five percent, so I do appreciate the two hundred feet radius concept. I think it's a lot easier to understand.
So the panic permits, so-called feature is a presumption and probably a reasonable one. Would you say that that then lowers your appetite to prohibit R two and a new, a new ordinance?
It doesn't lower my appetite, but I'm just bracing for more because R two tends to be smaller lot size, could be more affordable homes than bigger lots of R one.
So the option then is, is to continue to have R two available for, under certain circumstances that are written. And then we just hope that it doesn't expand beyond what we would like to see.
Hope it's not a strategy, right?
Well, I'm not being facetious, I'm really not. Because I, I don't like the idea of panic permits either. But we already have the ninety day, you must pull trigger on your permit, right? Is it ninety days? Now, if you pull permit, you have to be in operation in ninety days, is that true?
Yeah. Not, not specifically for an STR permit. I mean, someone can be vested, they submitted an application today for a new building and said, City of Fredericksburg, this is going to be an STR, that's why I bought it, that's why I'm developing it. You know, they can become vested and then they would have the time to complete that.
That's time unlimited?
The permit can expire, but, but vesting is out there. And anything, obviously, that's already in the pipeline would be able to complete and get their permit.
So what I'm saying is that we might just have to live with people who do panic permits, who really do want to get in the STR business prior to the, the enactment of, the, an action of this permit. But I don't know that we, we, we don't get to choose to just put a stop on R two and we're good. There's going to be probably some panic permits. It seems like that if they decide to do a panic permit, there should be a time limit on them acting on that permit. They can't just get it and hold it. Am I in legal ground, Nick? If he, Rachel, sorry.
You're fine. So at least in terms of if they, if someone were to obtain a panic permit with no intention of operating in the near future, they get their permit, they can legally operate, but they're in a district where that use is no longer permitted, their permit would lapse after ninety days because that is the discontinuance of non-conforming use provision contained in the zoning ordinance. That's the same discontinuation provision that applies to any use that is non-conforming within that zoning district. So if they, if they only get the panic permit, for instance, to block other STRs or something like that, who knows? Then if they have no intention of operating, their permit would lapse in ninety days and it would no longer be a permitted use of that property.
And that's the non-conforming issue that's arguing some?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're kind of covered if they don't, if they're not serious.
I think that Emily's point is we have to be prepared that there will be some if we do this. But if we don't do this, then we should expect more STRs in R two anyway.
Well, we're certainly leaving ourselves to hope for that. And we've seen this since April first, twenty twenty-two, by far, the majority, I know that some other were invested, but in spite of that, the majority was in, in R two. There weren't R ones trying to get through the cut process. And, and we know that we're limited in housing, we know, you know, all those issues we've talked about. Well, would you prefer, counsel, to have Rachel come up with a language that, that does that prohibition and see how you, how you live with it? Or are you wanting to go ahead and keep the language as it appears today? Which is to permit short-term rentals in R two historic overlay where it overlaps, in other words, there's all these provisions for doing so. Wouldn't it be the same language as we have in R one? Yes. Oh, sorry.
No worries. Yes, it would be very similar.
Allows the process through certain provisions.
Right.
Okay. Does that require a change in language?
I'm not sure off the top of my head because I don't have the R one prohibition language right, right in front of me, but...
Process with the, 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 the existing boundaries and the commercials, so.
So Mayor, you're wanting to, I'm sorry, just treat R two like R one, so allow an ADU by right, allow a B and B by right, and then, okay.
So prohibiting just STR and occupied? Okay.
And still allowing facilities or not? Still allowing STR facilities in R two? That's number two? Because right now in R two, STR facilities are allowed at the property of, of a non-residential.
Provision two? The same language of R one is allowed. All right, you get a sense of what we're after? Okay, we'll look forward to that. Number three, is that exact from the twenty-two ordinance that permits short-term unoccupied, all that paragraph there? Except for the seventy-five percent?
Except for the two hundred foot. So the current ordinance, this R one stranded. Eric, if you can pull up my screen, the R one stranded, it's the property, two property lines and seventy-five percent of the block. So this is two hundred feet. Staff had recommended going to fifty percent, and P and Z recommended seventy-five percent. However, I do think this needs more conversation. Because it's only considering short-term rentals in that two hundred foot. It's not considering a hotel, it's not considering C two zoning, it's not considering any other thing that would even allow you to apply for a special exception.
So I would like to present potentially number two more law lines, one or more law lines for a corner lot with a property lawfully operating as a short-term rental, unoccupied use or a commercially zoned property. Could that cover everything else? Because in that sort of the non-residential zones, it would apply.
Or would it be non-residential use?
I think a non-residential use would probably be a little more all-encompassing, yeah.
Anything else on that? Next section, enforcement, et cetera. My notes show paragraph A two, P and Z recommendation. Failure to timely remit applicable hot is a violation under this article and shall result in a ninety-day suspension upon notice of the director. If all applicable taxes not paid within thirty days of the issuance of a delinquency notice, the city retains the right to pursue all available remedies prescribed under chapter three fifty-one of the local government code. Just strengthens the, the provision for making sure hot is paid time.
And just to chime in briefly on that, in additional conversations with staff following the P and Z meeting, the finance department is suggesting that we just say that if all applicable taxes not paid in accordance with the delinquency notice, so that the regulations contained in the delinquency notice would control, it would be the It would be the same kind of compliance provisions that hotels, motels would also be subject to.
So lose 30 days?
Uh, I believe, do you? Yes. And I, I'm not quite sure the number. I think it might be 15 days. Um, that they're required to pay their tax, but finance may be able to speak to that a bit better.
Who issues a delinquency notice?
Uh, I, that would be the finance department.
Darren does?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have a date of limit?
I usually have the 10 days from when I, when I received the letter.
The, the, the person who hasn't paid us 10 days from receiving the notice?
We'll just dig in on that this one.
So that should say 10?
Like that.
We'll just change it to cross-reference to the delinquency notice.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else in this section? Uh, repeat offenses? How do y'all feel about the three minor equals one major? Three majors and what is it? Uh, no, P&amp;Z discusses quite a bit. Uh, one particular member was thinking, that just sounds like a lot of, a lot of trouble. You know, three this, three that.
Um, what's the, what's a minor and what's a major?
Well, um, minor is here, parking, solid waste, water, vegetation, brush, lighting, signage.
Yes.
And then it says, and other miscellaneous code violations, perhaps that should be specified. But it says not specific, specific to short-term rental. So I'm assuming that has to do with behavior issues or something, but.
Just about any other code violation that any other residence or commercial property could be cited for?
Exactly.
And then major is listed there as anything health and safety. They also discussed quite a long time, non-remittance of hotel occupancy tax and operating without a permit as making that a special category because somebody shouldn't get three bites of that apple.
So what happens if I don't? If I get three trash violations and I'm paid fine? Does anything happen other than that? That doesn't become a major, does it?
On an STR?
It does? No.
As a homeowner?
Yes.
Right. We don't have a permit to pull for you. This is specifically to, to, to the permit, the issued permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
But trash violations would be minor violations, so there wouldn't be consequences beyond just the regular fine.
So they could have trash, trash violation every week?
They'd have to get up to nine trash violations in order for a permit to be referred.
I think I'd go back to the trash violation. If you get one, you get a $25 fine. If you get two, you get a $200 fine. In general, for all of us.
That happens.
Well, that's the administrative adjudication process that is going away. Now all of those are going to municipal court.
And the judge sets the fines for municipal court, so.
So what do we all do about the violations? Any strong feelings about?
So essentially nine minors, if you think of it that way, trash, whatever, would bring them in front of you. It's into the principal's office. And you could do nothing, I mean, you could suspend a permit for 90 days or 30 days or.
How big an issue is this?
Repeat violations? It's not, it's not been an issue so far. I think by the time it gets to municipal court and someone's paying, they're feeling it financially enough to get their attention. But I don't foresee someone having to come to you just for nine trash violations, but maybe they do need to see you if they've got nine trash violations.
Anybody ever have nine trash violations?
No.
Okay.
Well, that's actually any minor violation.
Understand.
Three equal a major, so three majors can be referred.
Have you seen this done at other places? Under equals major, three major?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Then that is not only an STR regulation.
Okay.
Things too.
And I'll also note that when a permit is referred to city council for review, you're not required to suspend the permit. There's, there's a discretionary component there to where you can look at it and say, okay, maybe, maybe this wasn't a serious situation. For whatever reason, they don't need to have their permit suspended. But on the same token, you can say this is, these are willful repeated violations that we think merit a suspension. So there's going to be a bit of discretion in that decision at that stage.
I don't want a full permit. I want to be able to do the right thing.
Do y'all feel comfortable with the A versus B, minor versus major? Because to me, major is unresponsive 24-hour contact, not paying hot and operating without a permit. Those are kind of the, the biggest ones. But I know this has been vetted, but are, are y'all good with that delineation as it is now, A and B?
I agree it's a major. My issue is if they're not remitting hot or if they're found to be operating without a permit, should they get three of those? That's what I'm saying. Pulling that out of that paragraph and making another paragraph that puts those two things in the immediate review process. Is that too much? I mean, workload or administrative?
Uh, I mean, I would also note these are going, those issues are going to municipal court. So it's not like we're just ignoring them. But I mean, we're dealing with them through the court system. But that's, that's your call.
So the court system then decides one time hot, there's this huge fine and you're out of visit, what do you say? They, they decide the penalty?
So yes, the court would set the penalty. So for something related to a zoning violation, which for instance, operating without a permit would be a zoning violation, that's, that fine amount is up to $2,000 under state law. But the judge has discretion to set the fine amount of $1 to $2,000.
So this keeps the process in municipal court? Okay. Rather than putting a burden on the council and have a review process? Okay. Okay with y'all?
Yeah.
Okay. Y'all getting weary? Okay. If the director finds that a property, um, at three? Um, oh, no, I don't have anything there. Anything else in that section? Ready to go to appeal?
Hold on. So we had, we, we saw an R3 property that was not remitting hot and was operating without a permit and they were shut down for a year. What this is saying is they'd have to have one more violation and they could get suspended for up to 90 days. Isn't that what B2 is saying?
Yes.
Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Can we say up to a year? Up to, meaning we could do less than?
Oh, you said it within a 12-month, up to a year?
No, within a 12-month period, if there is three major violations, we could suspend the permit for up to a year.
I see.
I think I'd like to discuss that in executive session with you all, just for some legal implications before we make a decision on that.
They did discuss that in P&amp;Z. Well, that's my understand. But um, 90 days, what I'm understanding is it's a pretty serious suspension for somebody who's. Is, and y'all were recommending against that length of time as, as being perceived as onerous?
I think up to 90 days is acceptable. Um, but beyond that, I'd like to get into the legal implications before we make a decision.
You want to recommend that she look into that?
Let's wait till after executive session and then discuss more. Wait till after executive session.
Okay. Anything else on that? Section 22225 is an appeal. I don't have anything on that one. Anybody else?
No.
2226, applicability to existing operations, non-conforming uses. Paragraph A, regulations pertaining to life and safety. Shouldn't we, as we're talking about, um, existing operations, not, the discontinuance, et cetera. Um, should we specify in that first sentence, the regulations identified here in pertaining to life and safety, not occupancy, 24-hour contact, signage, and advertising? Adding those things shall apply uniformly to existing and new?
We can clarify that.
24-hour contact, signage, and advertising. Y'all okay with that? I'm adding those three extra things to existing. Specifically. And then my other thing is, paragraph D, it should be a defense, et cetera. These are P&amp;Z recommendations. Use at the short term, use was suspended for a period of 90 or more days. Uh, that's a defense if they abandon the non-conforming use. If they, um, can make, make the case for a period of 90 days or more days for repair, renovation, property owner's use as a primary residence or for use as a long-term rental and the property owner notified the department, et cetera. And then at the end, and files a $0 hotel occupancy tax report on a quarterly basis as required. Okay with that? 90 days?
90 days or more?
Or more. Yeah. So that's, they can make the appeal, yeah, and not lose their permit. Section four?
Just a moment before we move on. I think, um, we wanted some clarification on whether occupancy, if, if your intention is to also apply the occupancy regulations to existing and new permits or just life safety?
Just life and safety.
Okay.
So you have to, you have to specifically exempt occupancy?
It's in there right now.
We'll just remove it.
And occupancy solstice.
It was my intention not to include occupancy.
Got it. Thank you.
Because of all of the, the long line of special exceptions of room and parking. All right, we're on page 16 now. One of the issues that was discussed by P&amp;Z was an outdoor access to restroom. Um, should, should an ADU be required to have a restroom? And that is in the city zoning ordinance. Accessory dwelling units shall comply with section 8.22 of the city zoning ordinance, which requires an STU on the property, an ADU, sorry, ADU to have restroom facilities. All right. Then we've got the consistent language in the short-term rental B&amp;B with a maximum of four units. Change that from eight to four. Stop me when you want. Section five?
Wait, um, just to true up the definition, short-term rental unoccupied? Same as before, if you could make it a short-term rental within a lawful residential dwelling unit that is not an STR, ADU, or STR B&amp;B. That was my suggestion for the earlier definition.
All right, section five? P&amp;Z recommended prohibition of any new STRs in R3. Do we need to amend the zoning code, section 3120, to comport with this section? Because we've got this graph here and it shows no longer permitted. Does that also need to be addressed in the zoning ordinance?
I will double check that.
Okay.
And then whatever changes you want to R2 would also need to be reflected here.
Say again?
If you wanted to make those changes to R2 to make it look like R1?
Yes, R2, the same issues that we talked about before in the previous section. Whereas this gives the pathway, we'd like to consider closing the pathway to new R2 applications. Is that clear? Thank you. Section six? Paragraph A2, you permit short-term rental facility operations in the R2 zoning district property immediately if that's not. Okay. Um, that's going to be moot if we follow the other.
I think on A3, it needs to be changed, like the other one was, short-term rental and occupied use or a non-residential zoned property.
Paragraph?
Just for clarity, I think when we spoke about it a few minutes ago, we discussed if it was a budding a non-residential use. You want it to be a non-residential use or a non-residential zoning district? I know it seems like splitting hairs, but it's not.
I guess it matters. Tell me the difference. I mean, what are their?
So they could have an SUP on that property for a commercial use or something like that, or at least not, non-residential use. Um, so they may be within that zoning district but have a commercial or otherwise non-residential use attached to the property.
Does use transfer?
Uh, something like a specific use permit would run with the land. Yes.
Can you do both?
So say, um, non-residential zoning district or use? Sure, we can do that.
Paragraph B2, whether operations are short-term rental in a property zoning district is compatible with the quality of the surrounding area. How is that determined?
Did you ask about compatibility with the surrounding area? Um, so that, that is a typical consideration that the zoning board of adjustment would use in hearing other cases. It's a typical consideration that P&amp;Z also uses when hearing cases like specific use permits. It's sort of your typical zoning consideration for any sort of application involving a different zoning use request.
It was intended to be broad enough to create criteria based on the situation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, section seven? Repeating, would refer to make any parking changes apply only to those new ones that come online after the passage of this amendment, not retroactive. And you see the specification in each of the matrix? Any issues there?
Making sure it's consistent with the other ones. I thought there was some, something didn't match up. So like this, I mean, for a short-term rental accessory, in no case shall the number of required off-street parking spaces be reduced below two spaces per parcel? Does that mean the ADU and the main structure?
Right. So we changed that to parcel for that situation.
Okay.
Right. Because if you're saying there's a main house, then it should, should have two spots. And then the ADU should have one, but under no case should the parcel have less than two.
Anything else on that section? Section eight? My question is on paragraph B. B, B is employee. Section 3110, mixed residential is hereby amended by replacing the references to section, et cetera, chapter 20, et cetera, and by deleting the provision that reads as follows. The immediately of butting is deleted, but not the 5,000 square foot minimum from municipal code. So to be consistent in the language of the zoning ordinance, municipal code, can we add the 500, sorry, 5,000 square foot provision of each place immediately of butting is used?
Yes, I will double check that.
Okay.
And then on B and C, do we also need to delete STR facility? You could check on that too.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of my comments. One else? Sorry. All right. Both of you have been very patient. I am going to take a four-minute, 59-second break. And I will hold it to that because I'm just as anxious as you are to hear what you have to say. I'm just as anxious as you are to hear what you have to say and to get over my day.[602.12]
Second. I'm so sorry, procedural faux pas. I have a motion second to go from regular session in a public hearing on Thursday. Aye. Thank you.
Does my three minutes start over?
The three minutes starts now, yes.
Okay, so, thanks for letting me talk.
Yeah, I said three minutes. Right?
Yeah.
What is his question?
My question is, open public hearing, is there a time?
No, that is a discretion of the presider. Is my understanding. And our council rules at the beginning of our tenure establish a three-minute limit. Yep.
I have learned so much.
Okay, I think. Tom, let's begin now.
Okay, thank you so much for the changes, in particular where you're talking about changing, just having STRs abutting to having non-residential uses and specifically the fact, non-residential use and non-residential zoning, I think that's important. I personally have non-residential use next to me and non-residential zoning, and it makes a huge difference in how things are determined. Really what I wanted to talk about is secondary to that. It's that, it's about entry corridors. So highways 290, 87, and 16 on both ends of each are our entry corridors. The only other one is North Mylum, where I live. North Mylum is quite different from all the others. If you look at the zoning map, half of it is zoned R1, and approximately thirty-some properties that are zoned R1 actually have North Mylum addresses. And they're zoned R1 with about twenty that are being used as residences. My numbers are rough, I admit. But essentially, all the rest of the entry corridors, there is one single house that abuts an entry corridor and has a entry corridor address, and that's 1331 Main. This is not equitable for the folks on North Mylum. So part of this, or my suggestion twofold, either ease the restrictions on North Mylum for short-term rentals, or change the zoning to match the other entry corridors. The zoning on North Mylum is mixed at best, a lot of C1, a lot of R1, and a couple other things until you get up near Main Street where it's more commercial. I think that, I think that it should be zoned as C1. That's how it's becoming used. So that's primarily my point is, I think that you need to look at that, or give us some relief, otherwise. That street is incredibly noisy. We live right at a forty to forty-five mile hour per zone speed limit switch, so you get vehicles accelerating, vehicles decelerating, and it is just absolutely absurd as far as the amount of noise. So that pretty much is it, as far as my concerns. The other thing I've heard, both in planning and zoning, and a little bit here, is that folks would prefer to see less tourism. Drive 290 to Johnson City, there's not going to be less tourism. So either STRs are going to be a part of our community, and people are going to make money for the folks who actually live here and own properties here, or we're going to have hotels come in, and corporations and out-of-towners are going to make money. So one way that's going to get filled, or one way or another that's going to get filled, that need for tourist locations to stay. So, thanks, please consider the rezoning of North Mylum, and that's about it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks. Appreciate you.
Roger Norman, and Moses, you're up after Mr. Norman.
Hi, Roger Norman, I live in the Cross Mountain area. First off, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that you guys are doing. It's incredible to watch it unfold, and I think you guys are doing a great job. I think you guys are headed in the right direction. My ask of you, as you go through all this, is to try to ensure two things. One is to have no new STRs in residential neighborhoods, R1, R2, and R3. And I've spoken to previous city councils, and I've said there that I'm not anti-STR. I just think that STRs need to be in a commercial zone, because I believe that they're commercial businesses. And if they're run as commercial businesses in commercial zones, I think that resolves a lot of what we're struggling with right now, with what you guys are struggling with. Secondly, for existing STRs, just trying to make sure that kind of guest behavior rules are easy to understand and are easy to enforce. There's been some comments about, from operators, of just trying to understand what are operators supposed to do, what are their guests supposed to do so that they have an opportunity to comply? That's one side of it. The other side of it is making sure that the residents know the same rules, and what residents need to do when those rules aren't being followed. So that it just becomes a very easy process to know what should be done, and then know how to enforce if bad behavior or if non-compliance is occurring. There's been some talk about, you know, surveys and data and previous conversations, you know, the comprehensive plan and the resident survey, and the resident sentiment survey has come out, and I think the mayor said it very well in one of his comments where he said, "The section regarding accommodation-sharing services like Airbnb and BRBO reveal the high degree of agreement with the need to regulate them like hotels and other property rental businesses. The survey also revealed a high degree of agreement that they can cause inflation in rents, which impacts the cost of living for locals. Finally, there's a high degree of agreement that they can be disruptive to local neighborhoods." And so I think the survey results clearly indicate that controlling STRs in residential neighborhoods is what residents want. That's what the surveys have said. It'll improve the quality of the neighborhoods, and, you know, I understand the business concerns that are being voiced. But without a quality neighborhood backbone for this community, we don't have anything. So I think the priority needs to be in neighborhoods. I think the business will take care of itself. I think it'll all work out as long as they're zoned to be businesses. I don't really have that concern. And then lastly, I think this will really help the affordable housing crisis that, or issues that we're facing. Because without having affordable housing, where people can be in the community and support the tourism and things that are good for all of us, that's going to put the whole community in jeopardy as well, from a business and a residential perspective. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Moses, and following that is Michael Tatch. Moses probably had to go to work, right? Okay. Michael Tatch.
Good morning, council, and thanks for your service to our community. My name is Michael Tatch. My wife and I both grew up here, and we came home six years ago after I retired from twenty-five years in the Navy. I recognize the majority who attend and speak at these meetings are from the STR owners' group. That's logical, because their profitability is at risk. However, I want to be very clear that your loyalty is not to whomever speaks loudest or brings the most people to the meetings. We all know that elected officials work for their constituents, and in this case, that's the voters of further. The election that followed the failed STR moratorium was the biggest single-issue litmus test vote I've ever seen in our town, and those who voted down the moratorium were immediately voted out of office. Mayor Hoover and our new council members received roughly double the votes of those incumbents. That's several hundred voices who want real action on the problem, several hundred more than you see at the meetings, and several hundred who gave you a mandate to act on the issue. So how should you act? First, I strongly recommend that you continue to revise the ordinance and implement the reasonable, common sense recommendations of Neighborhood Coalition. But I have an additional recommendation. Over the next three years, significantly raise the STR permit fees and the fees for violations. I'm talking about a thousand-dollar increase for every permit next year, two to three-thousand-dollar increase the following year, three to five-thousand-dollar increase after that. Fines for STR violations should be similarly increased. These increases will produce several good results. Most importantly, the city will collect enough revenue to pay the staff for additional code enforcement and other burdens that come with the STRs. And shouldn't the STRs pay for themselves rather than the taxpayers? Second, increased fines for violations will improve compliance. And finally, some STR owners may dislike it enough that they return homes to the market, where local families desperately need them. This would simply be the market working, exactly like it did when the STRs exploded in our town, except it would be working in the opposite direction to restore some balance. One last point, you're not responsible for protecting the profitability of the STRs. In my Navy career, I owned five rental properties across three states. No one guaranteed my profits, I knew that. I sold my properties when markets and neighborhoods changed. I took a huge loss in Virginia in 2008 when the market cratered. So far, our town's leaders have put STR interests above the needs of our residents and neighborhoods. But it should be the other way around. Your constituents voted for you, and their needs are clear. Here's the bottom line, your loyalty is to your voters, not to the STR community. Your voters gave you a mandate. The Neighborhood Coalition recommendations, along with my recommendation for increased fees and fines, can fix the problems and create market forces to restore balance. You made some good changes today, please continue to improve the ordinance for the betterment of your voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Denise Morris, followed by Jenna Duratt.
Well, originally, when I wrote this, I was going to say good morning, but I'll say good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. I've been before you before, you've heard my background a little bit, but I'm going to repeat it. So some of you may remember me from previous city council meetings. I've had the privilege to speak here, and again, I want to thank you for all your hard work. I want to share a little bit about my experiences and concerns about this matter, because it's very close to my heart. I am also a proud Frederickburg native, graduated from high school here, and my connection to the city runs deep. My mother broke schweers, started home service and management back in 1986, working closely with Loretta Schmidt, and Jessica Mittel, to manage many of their properties. Through their hard work and dedication, our family thrived alongside Frederickburg itself. We witnessed the incredible growth of the bed and breakfast industry, and saw our city invest significantly in marketing our beloved town. Well, I can proudly say that these efforts have paid off. The travel industry has become the backbone of our local economy, providing jobs for hundreds and hundreds of families in Frederickburg. I have the privilege of dedicating the last thirty-seven years of my life to this industry, starting as a high school student, helping my mother with cleaning duties. Over the years, I worked for some remarkable properties across the state of Texas. Today, I'm sorry, I get emotional, I'm sorry. I proudly call Cozy Vacation Rentals my family. The team and owners I work with at Cozy are exceptional. Each one of them shares a deep love for Frederickburg, just like I know all of you do. They've chosen to invest in our community, and some of these owners are part of the very fabric of Frederickburg, seeking to keep their homes with their families for generations to come. One such family is the Wicker family, and if you're from Frederickburg, Harlan Wicker, you know the name. And they rent their home through us, so that they can keep it in their family. Last year, Cozy had the privilege of hosting over a thousand families during spring break. These families indulged in amazing shopping along Main Street, dined out in restaurants such as Pasta Bellas, Otto's, Boulgerrman Bakery, Weston Pizza, you name it, they were everywhere. They also hiked in Chunit Rock, stocked up in essentials at HGB, leaving a significant imprint on our local economy. It's difficult for me to grasp that the city council is considering measures that could limit an owner's ability to afford and maintain these homes. My plea to you today is simple, please let's not do anything that would harm these individuals and families who have poured their hearts and resources into our community. Our unique town thrives because of the vibrant and diverse experiences our visitors have, thanks to these rentals and these owners. Let us continue to support the dreams of those who invest in Frederickburg and keep our city thriving. Thank you for your time and consideration. Let's work together to ensure that the charm and prosperity of Frederickburg continue to flourish for generations to come, and I really do thank you for all of your hard work. I know this is difficult. It's kind of difficult for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenna, and Matt?
Hello, I'm Jenna Duratt. I am the co-owner of Cozy Vacation Rentals. City council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this morning, afternoon. As a mother and as a resident of the city, I want to share my perspective on why we should reconsider our priorities when it comes to allocating our valuable time, money, and resources. I believe we should be focusing our efforts on addressing other pressing issues that affect our community's well-being, particularly those related to families like mine, who are attempting to make their livelihood in a tourism town. First and foremost, let me emphasize that I fully recognize the need for reasonable regulations on short-term rentals to ensure the safety and the harmony of our neighborhoods. However, I also believe that we have dedicated an excessive amount of time, resources, and public attention to this issue, often at the expense of addressing other crucial matters. One of the most pressing concerns facing families in our city is the lack of affordable and accessible childcare options. As a local business owner, how can I invest into a community and raise a family without proper childcare? Many parents like myself struggle daily to find reliable childcare while we work to support our families, our employees, their families, and our local community and economy. There are few options, and typically, two-year-long waitlists. A month ago, another local daycare closed its doors after being open for barely over a year, leaving over fifty children, including my own, and their hard-working parents, most local business owners, without care, and at least twelve staff members now without jobs. When the business reached out in need of support at the possibility of closing its doors, our local government offered to only pray for them. Yet, this council and local city government is able to provide plenty of resources and thousands of dollars in funding to enforce and over-regulate short-term rental housing. Local government has spent the past two and a half years saying that certain community members want their city back from short-term rentals, yet we aren't even willing to put money into crucial community services like childcare, which then allows parents to work and thrive in the local economy. This struggle affects not only our ability to maintain our jobs, but also our children's development. It hurts economic growth and entrepreneurship in our community, which is the driving backbone in our local economy for jobs. In conclusion, while I understand the importance of regulating short-term rentals, I urge the city council to reevaluate its priorities. What we need to be discussing is how to support our small businesses, make childcare more affordable and available, invest into our future generations, and incentivize young families to stay here and thrive here. By doing so, we can create a city that truly values its families, fosters a sense of community, and provides a brighter future for our children. The more economic growth and development is hampered, the more the community will suffer due to lack of interest in wanting to invest into the local Frederickburg economy. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jenna. Matt, and then Leonard Bench.
Good morning, thank you, local government, city council, and mayor. I stand before you today as a small business owner who has weathered the challenges just with you all over the last two and a half years of dealing with the short-term rental problems, that it's a major issue on every side, and we get it, and there's really no right answer. But new changes being proposed to short-term rental properties in multiple areas does further deeply concern me. Restricting our industry operations further will only lead to job losses and financial instability for many local individuals and their families. We must consider the human impact of these decisions on the lives and depend on the stability of the short-term rentals in our local economy. My journey has been about my local business supporting our community and the livelihoods of over thirty people that we employ. My family, this community, the people that we employ, and the people who get to come and experience this great town, and who stay with us and many of the other operators, management companies, is the why I get up every day and do what I do each day, and it's why everyone in the room who does support short-term rentals does what they do each day, for the people who get to experience what Frederickburg has to offer. We live here, we are raising our families here, we work here, and we provide to the local community and the economy. First and foremost, my business and the job provides are intertwined with the short-term rental property and leasing industry. The same goes for all short-term rental operators and owners renting the property in downtown Frederickburg. Over the years, all property owners and operators of short-term rentals have immensely contributed to the local economy, providing employment opportunities and are driving economic growth in many areas such as the restaurant industry, local shops, and over six million in 2022, driven by hot taxes alone to the local city. And there's many more, you know, awesome statistics and amazing economic drivers than just that. Additionally, the proposed restrictions will stifle local entrepreneurship and innovation. Small businesses like mine are the backbone of our community, driving creativity, economic diversity, and opportunities for residents. By imposing further limitations, we risk discouraging local entrepreneurs like myself from pursuing their dreams and contributing to the vibrant tapestry of this town. Let us nurture a business-friendly environment that fosters growth and empowers individuals to create sustainable enterprises here. Without floors and lodging accommodations, entrepreneurs and small business owners will not exist here in the future. It is the lifeline and key economic driver of this community, and that's been proven by the Economic Impact Study of over a year and a half ago by the meetings. Furthermore, let's address the concerns about community well-being. Responsible short-term rental operators like myself are invested in maintaining the harmony and safety of our neighborhoods. We can work together to establish guidelines to ensure our guests respect our communities without resorting to extreme restrictions that may unfairly penalize law-abiding property owners and short-term rental managers. Together, we can find solutions that balance the interests of the community, the local economy, and the individuals who depend on businesses like mine for their livelihoods. In closing, let us preserve the opportunities that have been created, protect the jobs that we have established, and find a way for the fosters growth, innovation, harmony within our community. I was really, I wrote a couple of things, but I was really impressed today with just the discussion, the open-mindedness, you know, that it made back and forth, and it was very pleasant to see. I do think we made some steps in the right direction this morning, which is great, great to see. But, you know, I urge you not to make decisions that will hamper, you know, development and make it harder, as Tony said, for the people who are trying to do the right thing, day in and day out, to survive in this industry here. Thank you for your time, any consideration, and thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, Matt. Leonard Bench, followed by Randy Hettleson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you. I am really impressed by the diligence that everyone at council staff has shown us today. I also want to congratulate and thank Randy Riley for not recusing himself. I think that was the proper thing to do, and I think that's really a great sign about the integrity of the people who serve us. I appreciate that. I'm actually a little bit concerned, because I don't think that this is an all-or-nothing issue. We all believe this is a town which is based upon tourism, and we really like that. There's a lot of things here that would not have been, and the people who are doing a really great job, I think, are a part of our community, and they're important. However, there has to be some balance, and so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that. My wife and I live in Frederickburg. We live next door to a high occupancy hotel. There are fifteen persons there with eight to ten cars every weekend and every holiday. And those persons who are there are not families. The times that there have been multigenerational family, or even people with children, over the past year have been not five. And also, the people who are in that house are not related to each other, they're all friends. And typically, there are that's the right parts. And the fifteen people who come there usually come in fifteen cars. So I know that we're thinking of the type of families that come and use Airbnbs or short-term rentals, and I think that's probably the case. However, the high occupancy hotel that I live next to is surrounded by low occupancy motels. So there are a lot of other lower occupancy facilities around us, and they may be less intrusive. However, in my situation, which is living next to a party house, which is not really addressed by the ordinances that we have in place now, it is a constant nuisance. You know, the trade-off is that we don't get the quiet enjoyment of our house half-time of the month, and the owners of the house next to us who live in Austin have only been here once or twice, and I've talked to them several times, actually. You know, they get fifteen hundred dollars a night and three hundred dollar cleaning fee with minimal oversight. And we haven't had to call the police recently, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't disrupt our life. So that's my point. My point is that, is everyone has said that a very few number of operators and a very few number of properties represent the vast majority of the problems. For those people, I think the rules should be really strict, and I think enforcement should be really strict. The people who run their properties well are not going to be caught up in this. If I were a homeowner, if I were an STR owner or manager, I would want there to be really, really strict rules, because I would know it's never going to apply to me, because I'm going to do the right thing anyway. So I would like to ask the people who are in this business to help us, help me live my life, but I do not have that life now, okay, because of what happens there. I have cars all in front of my yard all the time, right? And I think that you're going to have to maybe separate high occupancy houses from lower occupancy houses, real quickly. I think there should be no more STRs in R1 or R2. I think that you have to have maximum occupancy more than ten. I think that parking has to be limited to two places on the streets. I really think there should have to be an inspection every year, just like a hotel. I think renewals are a different story. I don't think there should be transferability of a permit. I think a permit is a permit, it's called permission, it's not a property right. And I think that we need to do, look at this as a work in progress. I think it's true that we have spent a lot of time on this, and I think, you know, when we're talking about childcare, I totally understand what she's talking about. But one of the things that's happened is that with a significant number of the houses in our community being occupied as STRs, we have a huge opportunity cost because of the people that are not there. We have a huge opportunity cost because of the families who could do the things that we would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to be fair to everybody, Ms. Hettleson?
Hi, thank you. My main question was already addressed, but I'm looking for just clarity on the recusal topic. So, does accepting campaign donations from any special interest groups with an obvious agenda, for example, hotel owners or lobbyists, Neighborhood Coalition, or STR Alliance, is that considered a conflict of interest and therefore grounds for recusal?
Mr. City Attorney, she has asked a question, I'm sure it's probably aimed at me, because someone else raised the issue about my recusal based on my treasurer for my campaign is the wife of a founder of Neighborhood Coalition. That doesn't violate any of the conflict of interest laws in the state of Texas or in our ethics ordinance, because it's not a direct conflict at all, and both of those provisions address situations like that and declare them not to be conflict of interest. There's no conflict.
I appreciate that. I was just, I'd asked around and hadn't, nobody seemed to really have it clarified.
I certainly do know, and you're welcome to call me.
Thank you. Another, just a quick comment, is that the Texas Supreme Court has already ruled that short-term rentals are residential and not commercial.
Thank you. Kristen Collins, followed by Jeff Timble.
Thank you. This is not my normal Tuesday, yet here I am, because I feel this is important for me to be here. I've stood by and watched, I read the paper each week, I voted, I even submitted a survey, and yet it appears that the voices of those who live in our residential neighborhoods are not being heard, or a quiet group, perhaps. All the while, I don't know my temporary imported neighbors, and they don't know me. They drop themselves into our neighborhood with little regard to the impact they have. This is not the Frederickburg in which I grew up. STRs are not what made Frederickburg good. Their result? STRs are not what made Frederickburg good. Frederickburg is at a pivotal time in our town's history. Fredericksburg is at a pivotal time in our town's history. I asked the council to restore our residential neighborhoods, restore our town, and preserve the character that makes it the place we all want to live.
Thank you. Jeff, followed by Susan Otmers.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate the time and all the effort that y'all have been doing over the last few years. What I really want to talk about is when I made a decision to move to Fredericksburg, I knew it was a tourist town, I knew it had STRs. I made the decision to embrace that and embrace the people around me and learn the positives and negatives of it and work forward. That's how you build better things. What we're responding to are market interruptions, COVID, ice storm, now interest rates. Albert Hotel is going to be a market interruption. What no one's talking about is y'all have already approved 1,000 new homes being built, 1,000-plus new apartments being built, five more hotels. What are the impacts on the STRs? We're very fortunate, to me, the crown jewel are these STRs and the historic district. You've got probably 500, 600 homes, three-bedroom, one bath, two-bedroom, one bath, less than 1,300 square feet, not livable in today's standards, that are being leveraged for something else, generating income and being maintained. What, when I went to fight my taxes, you know what's really raising the property values around here? It's the homes that are turning from 1,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. They don't have the same regulations as STRs. You can only double an STR's footprint. You cannot do that with a regular home. That's, two doors down, goes from 400,000 to $1.8 million. How can I fight my property tax value? I can't, so I couldn't. Those are the things we need to be talking about, and what the future impacts of what we're approving in the building and what those impacts are, because we can't just govern on today, we got to govern on tomorrow and what we can control. And thank you for everything.
Emily, you're next, after Susan Otmers.
Good afternoon, Council. Thanks for letting me talk. I haven't written a big speech, so I just wanted to make some comments on things that we've addressed. I have a three-bedroom STR, and parking is not a problem for me, but what I see my clientele as being are older women coming and everybody wants one bedroom. I have strict rules and regulations, so asking someone that has the same sort of concept that we're running would make them have to close a bedroom because I can house six people, but, and I can do the three bedrooms, but these women are coming, so asking me to close one bedroom because I don't meet parking regulations is a problem. So I just wanted to let you know that. Also, on the minor versus major violations, I'm a rule follower. I mean, my grass is dead in front of the STR, I'm just saying. However, I had a sprinkling issue, a sprinkler system issue. I opened the STR one morning on a Friday morning, nothing is on, pasted on the front of my door, see nothing. The next morning, I get a call from the police department, which, thank you very much, I don't know who the officer was, but thank you, you saved me a ton of money, because we kept getting citations. I had a citation from previous, then I got the second citation. Had she not called me, I could have had up to three or four citations without being notified. After the second citation, 10, seven to 10 days later, I received a certified letter in the mail letting me know that. So when we're talking about, it'll take nine, nine instances before we come up for renewal. That can happen quickly because you're not notified efficiently and effectively that you've even received the first notice. So just take note of that when you are addressing that factor. And as far as living in Fredericksburg and being a resident in Fredericksburg, I grew up here. These houses are houses that my family have had, and we are doing STRs to be able to afford the taxes, and one of them I call is entertainment for my mother because she can stay, remain in her house and guard the STR, calling me to say, there are too many people there, how many people are supposed to be there? So they are being managed even by the neighborhood coalition that isn't really a coalition. The little old people are calling to let me know what's going on, except for the sprinkler system. That's in the historical district, so anyway, just to kind of let you know about that. And I think fees, so when we first started the STR business, we did do yearly inspections, and there were fees. Then after 2002, the fees went up per bedroom, so as far as increasing, as was recommended, $1,000 by 500 the next year, those are ridiculous because you don't make a ton of money on a STR. I mean, maybe you do if you have 12 people coming at $1,500 a night, but most of us are just trying to pay the taxes to let you guys know and make improvements. As you know, Fredericksburg is a lovely city, and a lot of our property improvements are related to the STRs that are going on around town. So thank you for your time and for listening.
Can I follow up with a question?
Yes.
Your first bit point about having to restrict your property for rental having to do with parking, I didn't make, didn't make the connection. What are you saying?
So I'm saying that the clientele that I've been seeing within the last year because of economy issues, those are, like I'm having three people come to the house, three guests, and they have one bedroom apiece is what they're looking for, is what I was trying to say, related to the parking. So if we have, I know that I'll fall into the grandfather clause per se, but if you close one of the bedrooms, then that just limits it down to, you know, the two people looking for us a place to stay because they can't provide three parking spaces onsite. Do you understand that?
No. What did we decide today that impacts you?
Nothing, because you've grandfathered me in, but I was just talking about the occupancy.
I want to make sure that we did that right, because that was my intention.
You did do that right, because we, they still, the lower number of guests, people want one bedroom these days. They're not, it's not a party house for the sorority sisters coming in.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. John McManus, I know, no, go ahead, Emily. John McManus, did you have to leave? Okay, Emily, and then Eric Hamerson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I must say that I had planned to say something quite a bit different than what I'm going to share with you today. I also really, really, really like y'all having your meeting and going through the ordinance and addressing what it is that you guys are looking for, because I think that that took care of probably 95% of the questions that we had. So thank you for doing that. I do have some market stats for you, but I want to make two suggestions, please. If you go to pay, and I know that you guys cannot respond to me, but that's fine.
No, we actually, we can, because this is an agenda item.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So if you go to page seven of the 22-page draft ordinance, item E says, "Upon issuance, each short-term rental shall receive a physical permit indicating the permit number, property address, maximum occupancy, the name and phone number of the 24-hour contact, and expiration date. That shall be posted at or near the exterior front door of every short-term rental. The physical permit may be posted inside a front window at or near the exterior front door, such that it is easily viewed from the exterior of the structure." Not that this would ever happen, but my suggestion is going to be, I understand having that contact information, right? Because if there's an issue going on, you want to be able to reach out to get it taken care of. Totally get that. What I'm going to suggest is we do the same thing for long-term rentals and also owner-occupied, and the reason being, I need to know how to get in contact with my neighbor. So if I'm having issues with parking, trash, noise, I can go and I can look at that permit, and I can call them. So what I'm going to suggest is that if we do that, and if you guys do implement that, let's make the color coding easy, and let's just say yellow for STRs and orange for long-term rentals or owner-occupied, so that way we can easily see that from the streets.
You're recommending the same kind of permit on a long-term rental property?
Yes, sir, I am, because I have the same issues, not me personally, I live in the county, but I'm just using as an example that I, what if I have issues? What if the neighbor is a tenant and they have been partying it up? And I have two little girls, which I do, you know that, so, you know, what am I going to do? I'm going to go to the tenant, and the tenant's going to say, oh, whatever, but if I can call the owner of that property and say, hey, I had an issue with your tenant, did you know? And then I can go into that.
Let me ask you a question, Emily. This is a question, a challenge. If you have a long-term rental next to you, aren't you going to know who the owner is?
Why? How would I know that? Let's say that I-
I have a long-term rental next to me, and I know who the owner is, and I will go to the long-term rental and say, who owns this house? And they'll give me the name and number.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, I could possibly know, but I may not know. What if I moved into a new neighborhood? I don't know that.
But your recommendation is if we're going to do it for short-term rentals, do it for long-term.
Yes, sir, we do it across the board.
Okay.
Okay, so the other item, I'm sorry, I'm a walker-
Are you saying?
I'm a walker and talker.
Well, you have 30 seconds.
Oh, shoot. Well, then you're not going to get market stats. Okay, so the other question that I have on page eight, if you flip the page, and this is item number four, I am still confused what vesting means. So I'm going to suggest that vesting be added to the definitions portion of the ordinance, so that way there's no confusion. If it means grandfathering, we all know the word grandfathering, let's call it grandfathering. If it means something different, that's fine, but please let everyone know what that word means so that there's no gray area.
I need you to wrap it up.
Yes, okay, so market stats, this is the fun part. So these numbers were pulled at 11:43 this morning, and you'll be happy to know, non-STR properties, we currently have 98 active properties that are non-STRs, six-month supply. The median sold price is $518,813. That's down from last year by 6%.
Emily, I need you to wrap it up, because it's not fair to everybody else for me to give you five minutes and everybody else three.
Okay.
Can you submit those later, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
But the point is, what? The point, point is STRs are losing market share?
Yes, if you would have, yes, given me that opportunity. STRs, there's 53 that are permitted that are currently on the market. We have 13-month supply. The ordinance is working. So as far as 31% down from last year, the median sold price for STRs is 632,000. So it's doing exactly what you guys wanted it to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eric Hamerson, followed by Mike Mahoney. Oh, I should say, because I saw in Emily's sheet, her email is absolute charm, reminded me that I did, I forgot to mention that I got a very long email and treatment of the comments about the amendment ordinance from Tammy Pat. I forgot to mention her name in my earlier comments. Eric, go.
Eric Hamerson, resident of the city. I'm also a member of the ZBA. As such, I have no comments on for or against what you're doing with the ordinance. When we had our last ZBA meeting, we were informed that we have no statutory authority as a ZBA to make recommendations to the city council, so I'm simply requesting clarification. The legal advice that we had was that as the ZBA, we will do one of two things. We will either do variances, we will do special exceptions. They're considered differently under Texas law. However, the way that the proposed ordinance is written, they seem to be merged. If you take a look at section six, which you didn't cover as you were talking about here, it states, "The variance procedures outlined in section 5.600 to 5.690 shall be utilized for special exceptions." You then list, if you go back to that section in the current ordinance, there are three criteria for granting a variance. Those don't match up with the sixth criteria for granting a special exception. So an applicant could come before the ZBA and meet all of the criteria for a special exception, miss one of the criteria for a variance, and would be required to turn that special exception down. If there are two separate activities, my suggestion to your consideration, not a recommendation, would be that you have two separate sections, one for how the ZBA handles variances and one for how they handle special exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you for serving on the zoning board adjustment. Mike, and followed by Pat Cantwell.
I would really like to echo what others have said. Your appreciation for the attention to detail and the effort you put into this is really appreciated, that the changes you're considering will go a long way in, toward balancing the interests of residents and the interests of the STR businesses. I'd still encourage you, though, to consider the violations issue. If a person is monitoring their properties and they have nine violations or eight violations in a year, and they merely get fines, and some of those can be very serious violations, it seems insufficient. We know that these are violations that are actually cited, and we know that enforcement's a problem here. So I don't know what the net ratio would be, one out of three, one out of five. You find one, but there's a bunch of others that didn't either get called in or that same property didn't get a violation. So please consider taking that down. In our tight budget situation year, I would encourage you to review whether or not the current permit fees are applicable. We've added personnel in the city staff, but those fees haven't changed since '22. The taxpayers shouldn't be supporting these businesses. Make sure that those fees are covering that. And I encourage, again, it was discussed, but I wasn't sure where it went, but consider making it clear the number of onsite parking spots available in advertising, as was explained by Stat, you can't force them to park there, but at least they know going, coming in. It's pretty heavily inferred, this is how many spots you've got. Thank you, thank you very much.
Mike, just to make sure I'm clear, Council Lady Purdner did clarify for Rachel the parking map specificity in the advertising.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Pat Cantwell, did you have to leave?
Ah, good.
And Linda Gerber final. Did you sign up?
I did online.
Oh, okay, okay. Great.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. My name is Pat Cantwell. I have mobility issues, so it's hard for me to attend council meetings, but I do watch many of them on video. I'm here today because I think it's important for you to hear from people like me who are forced to live next door to STR businesses, and they are businesses. I have never filed a report, but I've had visitors park in my driveway behind my car and with suitcases in hand walk up to my front door and try to get in. I have heard many a party, loud music, and voices late at night, and I've had my driveway blocked for hours. When I purchased my historic house that I love 35 years ago, I was unaware of zoned areas, but I know now that my house is rated as an R2. I raised my kids here and hoped to live here at least another 20 years, but the STRs are taking over our neighborhoods, very busy and lots of traffic on the weekends and empty during the week. Please listen to the will of the locals who have responded to your questionnaires. We don't want or need any more STRs in our neighborhoods, as evidenced by the voting out of pro-STR council. Please do not grant any more new R2 permits. There are STRs for sale in the paper, possibly because they're not the goldmine they thought they would be. If someone wants an STR, they can buy one from the people trying to unload theirs. Don't allow another residence to be taken from someone who lives and works- Don't allow another residence to be taken from someone who lives and works here. I already have an STR on one side of it. I don't want another one on the other side. Please do the right thing for Fredericksburg. Thank you for your attention.
Linda Gerber.
As everyone else said, thank you very much for, uh, allowing us to comment on this. My name is Linda Gerber and I live in the Fredericksburg, uh, city area. Um, one specific comment about the safety inspections. I stay in a lot of STRs when I travel and I enjoy that opportunity, but I don't come in and test the fire alarms or the, uh, the carbon di- uh, monoxide things. I assume they're okay and that the city I'm staying in has regulated those. So I think taking extra action to make sure that visitors are safe is part of our responsibility. Uh, another quick, specific comment. One time we were out of town and our landscape person had turned on the, um, sprinkler system, uh, when we would, when it was not one of the regulated times, and we immediately had a hundred and eighty-dollar charge. And my point is, there were not nine opportunities to appeal it. It was, that's what it was. We could have gone to a jury trial, but we decided not to. So I'm saying, I really think that any time period for number of infractions should be, uh, more, uh, consistent with other kinds of regulations. The other thing I wanted to mention is more general. I have recently had the opportunity to go to Santa Fe a fair amount of time. And one of the reasons I love Santa Fe is it's sort of like Fredericksburg. It's got this historical and cultural traditions, and there's a lot of pride in the city. And, uh, having gone there a lot, one of the things I've learned is that they have some pretty specific restrictions on the number of STRs. One thing that makes Santa Fe different is it has about eighty-nine thousand population size. I think we have about twelve thousand. And their regulations, just very quickly, some of them are, they only allow one thousand short-term rentals in the entire city. One permit per person, uh, one rental every seven days. The short-term rentals have to be a significant distance from each other, and in multi-unit housing, there can only be twenty-five percent of those that can be STRs. So that's, that's just some general comments to show that our regulations, as they are now, are considerably more liberal than they are in Santa Fe. And I use the term more liberal because I suspect most of the people in this area of Texas don't like to be called more liberal than Santa Fe. So, uh, I, I would point that out. But what I would say is I hope that we will think about the character of the city. And I'm not against STRs in general. And when I drive through town, center part of the town, you can probably pick out the STRs because they look so good, right? They, they add to the look of the city and all that. But I, I want to keep it in reason and balance, as other people have said. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right, I have online, um, applications from, well, actually submissions. Stuart and Carolyn Schultz, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
See you. Okay, um, just to make sure that it's in the record. Um, we've lived here twenty-two years, and this time we've seen the charm of our city eroded uh, by wine raised, wine pured companies and STRs. Crime has arisen, DUIs, public talks have become all too common. Uh, please help restore or at least limit the number of R2s, STRs and R2. Jeffrey, um, Moran, um, yeah, he's, he submitted the letter from their attorney, STRA attorney. He, he acknowledges himself as the STRA attorney, that's why I mentioned it. And Emily has her, okay, I don't have you listed, but I'll give you three minutes. Who are you? Are you a, are you a citizen? I mean, a resident?
Probably a carpet hanger, I guess. You know the term that means.
I do.
My name's Dallas Thompson. I own STRs in several states. Uh, I'm a graduate of the United States Air Force Academy and a Rhodes Scholar finalist. I've been, um, an advisor to Airbnb and VRBO, and I can speak to a lot of things. I think personally, I think decisions are being made with a bias and prejudice and made on the basis of fear and ignorance. And I'm, I could defend that statement by asking questions like, who knows what the Trust and Safety Council is at Airbnb and VRBO? Does anybody know the answer to that question? Let me explain. Airbnb and VRBO and these platforms have teams that go out and find things like sexual predators, Nazis, terrorist groups, and prevent them, using a social construct, from taking residence in an STR house. You don't get that safety and security with a hotel. There are many benefits and there are many things that occur behind the scenes with Airbnb where you don't need to put rules in place to manage things like fire alarms, because if you have inoperable fire systems, Airbnb, VRBO will shut your house down and never allow you to rent as a host ever again. So there are many things that are being talked about here without a knowledge of how the backend system works and without a knowledge and understanding of what the constitutional law of the state of Texas is as a property owner. Now, my heart breaks for the people that are against STR, and I can understand the reasons why you may be opposed to somebody renting a home out, but there are constitutional rights in the states that people do have and they should re- receive. Some gentlemen suggest that they damage neighborhoods. Well, it's a proven fact that STR houses have higher value. They take better care of their yards, they take better care of their properties. They literally have to do these things because if they don't, the houses will not rent and the business will shut down. So I, I can understand that, like, yes, there should be some neighborhoods where houses should or shouldn't be, but I also think there's a lot of mechanisms that can be utilized outside of what's being discussed. For example, parking. Why not? There's a one-point-five million people that visit Fredericksburg every year. That's over five hundred thousand vehicles. What would I do? Pretty simple. Charge a parking fee. If you're a resident of the city, you get a parking pass, you park everywhere for free. You charge the people that come in to pay for the parking. That'll generate about eight million dollars in revenue, if you average about ten, fifteen dollars a car a day, and then you add the tickets on there, you charge, get twelve million dollars. There's a lot of things that can be done by thinking outside of the box, number one. And number two, understanding the mechanism of what exists at VRBO and Airbnb, such as the Trust and Safety Teams, that prevent things like pedophiles, alcoholics, drug addicts, uh, and other serious criminal offenders from coming in, because those individuals stay in hotels because they can't stay in Airbnb, because Airbnb and VRBO does not allow those individuals on their platform. Were you guys aware of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so why is it that STR owners are being held to a different standard than hotel owners? Why is it that property owners or STRs are not being held to the same standard as long-term rentals or homeowners? Because if an STR owner has to put a placard in their window, so should the homeowner, so should a long-term rental owner. If I can prevent a child abductor or a drug addict or a sex trafficker or a racist or a violent criminal from being in my home, why don't we enforce the hotels to have that same standard? I think when you talk about the value and safety of a community, that is far more important and a far greater utility than things like, oh, I'm worried about a parking spot.
Okay, your time is up. Remit, tell me again who your name, what your name is.
I've, I've offered to work with your team on STRs and give some of the guidance. My name's Dallas Thompson. Um, I own a property, an STR property. I, I personally never buy STRs in neighborhoods. I do that for a reason.
Just attach your name so you can get it in the record.
Yeah, but I would love to, like, work with the team and give guidance.
Do you live in Fredericksburg?
I live near Fredericksburg, I don't live in Fredericksburg.
Okay, thank you. All right, Charlie, did you want to speak? You didn't sign up.
Yeah, I don't mind.
Anybody who's served on city council as long as you, that is such special privilege.
First of all, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but my understanding of public forum was anybody could get up to speak, so I apologize for that. Uh, you know, I'm gonna tell you one quick thing about my daddy taught me about parking, and I think this should be universal. Said, "Son, you live a good life, don't park in front of somebody's driveway." And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Good advice.
That's good.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your patience. I know it's, we've been here almost four hours and this issue has taken three and a half. I know that there are people who say, why are y'all spending all this time on this? Well, it hasn't been every day, every month, every week we've been on STRs. We've got a lot of stuff done, but as the, as-
Sorry, we have to go back into regular session.
Oh, well, I can follow up on that comment, eh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, is that, um, this is, this has been something we have been working on a lot, but we've also been, to Ms. Durres' point, we think, well, um, we've also been, all of us, spending a lot of time on housing, childcare, and lots of other things that have to do with the health and welfare and safety and quality of life of the community. So, uh, I'm not, and I'm saying she's got a great point. I'm just saying that she wouldn't know that because they're not things that we've put on the agenda right now. Okay, now I'll take a moment.
Make a motion, we go out of public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to go from public hearing into regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, Council, I will entertain a motion, if you're so willing, to table this.
I move we table the, uh, discussion on, uh, short-term rentals.
Second. Motion second to approve the, I mean, to, uh-
Time certain? We could-
Yeah, do you want it time certain, like, till the next meeting or within twenty days?
Well, mayor, before you take a vote on the table, and it's not subject to debate, however, we did have, uh, wanted to see if the council wanted to go into executive session on that posted agenda item for legal advice.
We do. Um, is there some executive session items on this topic?
If you wish.
Okay, all right. Then we come out with this motion or?
I, I just think you ought to ask for the legal advice if you intend to go into executive session while it's still pending on the agenda.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay.
If you want.
Well, my intent was to make sure that we got one on the record for tableling the issues. I'm just trying to give me what's the best time in. Is it after executive?
No, you can do that now.
Okay.
It's just if-
Okay, we are gonna go into executive session.
Advice to executive session, like, yes, we do that.
Okay.
While it's still pending that.
There it is. Okay, we are gonna go into executive session, but I wanted to vote on that issue. Motion second to table, um-
Wait, I'm sorry, if we table it, then we can't talk about it during the executive session. I think that's what they're saying.
No, as long as you direct us to go into executive session for legal advice while it's still pending on the agenda, we can do that.
We'd like to go into-
And then you can table action to a later day.
We'd like to go into executive session while this matter's still pending?
Yes, sir.
Have you got it? Now, can we vote on the table?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so a motion second on the table, and time sensitive to within twenty days or, yeah, within twenty days, which is required.
I think we need a new motion since the motion was withdrawn.
Oh, sorry.
Withrued, sorry.
Say it again. Say it again.
I withdrew my, uh, motion.
Do it again.
Okay, do it again.
I move that we table this to, for twenty days.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion second to table this for twenty days. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right. The, um-
Do we need to go into executive session now?
Just when you have, it doesn't have to be now.
Yeah, let's go ahead and finish the, uh, public agenda here, which is city management. Thank you all. Uh, we'll, we'll continue. Uh, those of you who have to leave, I know it's, um, middle of the afternoon, though. Go ahead.
Okay, mayor, council. Upcoming, uh, work sessions. Had a couple of, uh, items in mind for work sessions. Uh, the first being, uh, discussion of food and wine fest. I know we talked a lot about this during budget.
Folks, I need you to exit quietly, please. Thank you. We're still in session, I'm just giving you a chance to depart. I know you've been here a long time. Okay, go ahead.
I know we talked about, a lot about food and wine fest, um, during the budget process. In fact, we'll have an item on the, the next regular agenda to talk about changes coming up. Um, but we would like to sit down and talk about the event in twenty-twenty-five and what planning looks like and so forth, uh, in an additional, uh, or an upcoming work session. Also, uh, we're having, going through a, a staff exercise, I mentioned this earlier, uh, to identify potential new sources of revenue in the general fund side of our budget equation. I would like to brief the council during the work session on our ideas, um, moving forward, some of those. Uh, I would say parking being pretty, uh, close to the top of the list, since that was mentioned tonight. Uh, moving on to our recent town hall, and thank you, mayor and, um, Tony Klein for, and other staff for attending. Uh, we did have a very good turnout, uh, about forty-five people in the room. Uh, let me get to my notes here. We had people from all across the world and United States there, as you know. Uh, we had a lady that spoke from Hungary, uh, two different couples from Minnesota, Puerto Rico, Wisconsin, uh, and a lot of local folks as well. Um, a lot of the issues we heard that night were, uh, traffic-related. No chickens and ducks, anything like that. The topics, the issues vary from area to area, uh, certainly. Um, we were able to address some issues, I think, that night. We have some others on the list. And finally, we have Jeannie Rothberg that Braxton and I will be, uh, taking to lunch. She was, uh, she guessed closest to the number of calls for service. So the, these have been very good. You see the, these communities, uh, neighborhoods coming together, and they did know each other, meeting each other and sharing in the discussion of those, those, uh, community issues. That is my update, unless you have any questions.
Questions? I have ten items for future agenda.
And let me go to the spreadsheet right quick. Okay, coming up on the regular October seventeenth agenda, we will of course have this back on the agenda, correct? Um, the minutes, we have a, uh, public hearing for the consideration of a conditional use permit for a, uh, an STR unoccupied, an R2 zoned area, Anna.
Yes, there will actually be multiple SU, uh, conditional use permits. Um, one for the historic district, one for a condo, and a, uh, a restaurant on North Minna. So it'll be a few more STRs coming your way.
Okay, we have a consideration of a request from Heritage Hill Country Subdivision relating to maintenance of roadways within the development, uh, that Garrett will be covering. That's basically taking over maintenance of, of, of the streets, seal coat.
Yeah, that, that's a result of a recent town hall we had out there. That was a request from the neighborhood, the city, looking, taking over responsibility.
We have, uh, consideration of revising stage four watering restriction times from evening watering to the morning time. We've heard that from a lot of people, um, over the last six months or so. And as we've really dug into it, I think it probably makes more sense and it's what people want, so we'll be bringing that to council for your consideration. That'll be an ordinance amendment. Uh, we have a, uh, sidewalk construction contract we'll be bringing to the council, and we did maintain the hundred fifty thousand in that account. We're making up just a little bit from, um, this year where we have fifty thousand in the budget. So we have funded that, that fully. Uh, and then finally, uh, Fredericksburg Food and Wine Fest, we'll put together an item there to, uh, discuss potentially delaying that or not holding the event for, uh, twenty-twenty-four and then talking about future planning that will carry over into a, a work session at a, a future date.
I have one request for our next agenda, and this is a resolution, but not binding in any way, but, um, it's a water resolution. So we are light-years ahead of a lot of other small towns who have, um, done great work in infrastructure, thanks to Clinton and Garrett and Chris, among others. And, um, just thinking, as we continue to face this prolonged drought and increased development, this would be kind of a, a way of showing future developers that we are very interested in entertaining ideas for low-impact development, full pipe, rainwater catchment, things like that. So again, it's non-binding, it's something that the Hill Country Alliance drafted up. And, um, this would coincide with October nineteenth. Um, it's a national day of actions. Imagine a day without water. There's gonna be a lot of talk about conservation around that. There's going to be a lot of talk about conservation around that.
Right. Like-- Wouldn't-- What else? That's it. Anything else, counsel, on agenda items?
I move we go from regular session to executive session.
Second.
Have a motion second to go from regular into executive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Those four names last ten.
A move that we nominate Todd Verishwell, Donald Davis, Graham Pearson James, Max P. and Jill Tabor.
Praise the Lord. Second.
I have a motion second to nominate those five individuals. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Is there anything else?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
They're robbing me of my power. I have a motion second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.